Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 7, 2021, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order, and we do have a quorum present tonight. Our first item of business will be to approve the minutes of the March 3, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Everybody had a chance to review those. They were in our packet. Any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Make a motion. Will you approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have public hearings, and we have four public hearings tonight. The first item we have is a zoning application for approximately 0.66 acres located along Lee Street to be rezoned from CMR and CCO to PRD, the Lee Street Towns PRD, and CCO. Lee Street Partnership is the applicant. Ms. Kerr, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Jones, members of the Planning Commission. Subject property is located along the west side of Lee Street, north of Jackson Street, and south of Forest Street. Is one parcel totaling .66 acres and is identified as 617 Lee Street. Parcel is currently developed with a single-family dwelling and is owned commercial medical residential. The applicant wishes to rezone the properties to planned residential district. The proposed PRD would consist of a seven-unit townhome development, Lee Street Town PRD. The proposed gross density would be 10.6 dwelling units per acre. The subject property is also located within the CCO, and the proposed rezoning would not affect the CCO zoning. Adjacent zoning to the north, east, and south is commercial residential district. The property to the west is owned RS8 district, and the surrounding land uses are primarily single-family dwellings. The proposed development would include a Type A landscape buffer with six-foot white vinyl privacy fence along the north, south, and west property lines next to adjacent single-family residential uses. The development would have direct access to Lee Street. The proposed development would include two buildings with two-story townhome units. Each of the three units facing Lee Street would be three-bedroom units, having rear-entry one-car garages and a small front yard with decorative fencing. The four units in the rear of the development will each have three bedrooms, a rear patio, and front-entry one-car garages. All seven units will have at least one surface parking space. Garage parking for the development is required to meet the minimum parking requirements. The development includes surface parking for four guests. Primary exterior materials would be brick and cementitious siding. Minimum building setbacks for the development would be nine feet on the front along Lee Street, 10 feet on the side setbacks, and 18 rear setbacks abutting the RS8 district to the west. The pattern book states the development will include approximately 41% of total lot as open space and 5.8% formal open space. Two formal open space areas are proposed on the internal of the site. Exceptions from the zoning ordinance are front setback to be nine foot along Lee Street as opposed to the 18-foot setback required by the CCO regulations, rear setback to be 18 feet instead of the required 20-foot, a reduction in the required 18-inch step-up in the front elevation to a six-foot step-up, and an exception to allow a Type A buffer with a privacy fence in lieu of a Type D buffer on property lines adjacent to single-family residential zoning. This plan is not consistent with the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which recommends suburban residential land use character due to the more intense single-family residential attached use that is proposed at 10.6 dwelling units per acre. The zoning request is generally consistent with the North Highland Study area, which recommends a mixed residential neighborhood land use character as it emulates the purpose of the North Highland Study area through design and character to preserve the quality of life in the area. Staff is supportive of this zoning, rezoning request, including the deviation from the future land use map because the proposed residential land use will be compatible with the surrounding residential land uses. Compact, dense development is desirable in and around downtown and promotes walkability. The proposed development will contribute to the vitality and quality of life of those individuals in the area and continuing a positive trend towards reinvestment in the area. Applicant and his representatives are available to present a presentation and to answer questions as myself to the proposed rezoning, and the Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing, formulate a recommendation for City Council.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Kerr before we have a presentation from the applicant?
I'd like to thank Amelia for the introduction to the project and also for her input on this pattern book. This is another project that I'm working with Brian Burns on, and he's working with Jack Jones as well, or John Jones, in terms of bringing new vitality to the downtown area. That's been one of his themes in the last few projects, and it's continuing with a few projects coming up. So as Amelia mentioned, this is an existing house on Lee Street, on 617 Lee Street, and it's, I don't know how long the house has not been occupied, but it's not in great shape. The house is on a lot that's a pretty good-sized lot, so I think Brian had a vision for what this could be, and John as well. So with that in mind, we're grateful for the opportunity to present this project, and I'll go through a few brief slides to present it as well. As far as, this is just the front elevation. It's important to see because the other elevations are a little bit less clear than this one. So it will have foundation planted around it. This is what will approach Lee Street. As Amelia mentioned, there'll be one-car garages on these units in the rear. So the only thing that's not shown on this particular sketch is we're going to have some low-level kind of courtyard fencing to kind of give it a little bit of a courtyard feel from Lee Street. Okay, I think this is the...
Let's get to yours.
Yeah, that's the whole look in it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, it's over down the top. All right. Let's go full screen up on me. Okay. Next slide is basically, as Amelia mentioned, it's CMR zoning, and the utilities are existing because it's an existing property. It's where we don't utilize those existing utilities. This shows you kind of the context of the development. I think it's important to see. The house is more towards the middle of the property, almost towards, a little bit for the front of the property. So it's heavily wooded on the back site, and as Amelia mentioned, we're asking for a reduction, and the buffer requirement is one of our exceptions on the pattern book. There's a lot of existing material on the back portion, so obviously we'll try to keep as much of that intact as possible to really strengthen the buffer on the rear. I do have some pictures that show kind of the site. It's not as dense on the sides, but I'll show you that in the next few slides. On the top left-hand slide, that is the existing home. That'll be taken down. That's Slide A, or Picture A. Picture C is actually the home from another angle. And then B and D are actually homes that are directly across the street, and I believe that B is a duplex. It has two doors. I'm not positive if it's a duplex, but I believe it's a duplex, but those two homes are directly across the street. The image in A is basically one of the properties adjacent to us, so that'll be buffered because they can see pretty clearly onto this particular site. And then Picture B is another side view of the homes along the property line. C and D are kind of the character of the street, so I wanted you to see that as well. This is a site plan. As was mentioned, the front three homes facing Lee Street will have kind of a courtyard entrance with a small gate. They'll have parking in the rear for one car in a garage, and then one car behind them. It came up in our Planning Commission workshop about guest parking. Every unit has three spaces committed to it, so two spaces on surface parking, one in the garage, but they're distributed not directly behind the unit. So there's four parking spaces that are in the center development. Those will be considered guest spaces, but they can be allocated towards one of the units for their use as well. As far as the overall concept's concerned, we have front-facing units on Lee Street, and we have four units in the back. They'll have front-entry garages on them, as you can see from the driveways going to the front of the unit, and as Amelia mentioned, there'll be small patios in the rear of these particular units. The center green space is our formal open space, kind of internal to the development. One thing we're noticing, kind of consistent theme with our downtown developments that Brian's been doing, is we're bringing that formal open space either on the rooftops or more towards the center of the property, and that's just to really make it more obvious that it's the use of, you know, for those who own the development, own the homes versus someone walking in and using that formal open space. As was mentioned, originally, Brian and John were trying to do something a little bit more contemporary architecturally, and after meeting with planning staff, we went, we did some revisions, quite a few revisions on the architecture. We feel like this is very fitting with how the North Highland Study is projecting architecture. So although it's a three-story building, it has, it's really a two-story building, but it has some elevation to it, it has a craftsman character to it. So we're happy with this, the way that the use of materials, the accentuation above the garages, the articulation on the facade, you know, detail on the rafters. There's a lot going on that makes it very appealing from a craftsman style. And this is, let me just go back to that because I just want you to realize, the top right-hand corner is the front-facing unit. As I mentioned, that perspective, that's on the cover, is a little bit more animated than this, but that is the, basically, the front elevation of the units facing Lee Street on the top right-hand corner. And on the back, the top left-hand corner is the front elevation of the units in the rear. So those will have the front-entry garages. And it's a little confusing, I don't want to get confused, but basically the same elevations on the front elevations in the rear and the rear elevations of the front units. So you'll see that. I don't want to get confused because they're basically the same, the same look. One's the front and one's the back. Overall, we are asking for an exception with the buffer requirement to an A buffer. We all have a solid privacy fence around the property, and then Evergreens also as well established that. We'll have some internal landscaping, primarily shade trees, and foundation planting on the front units. There's really no room for landscaping on the rear units, but they'll have a patio area that they can use in the back for their more useful green space. And as far as amenities are concerned, as Amelia mentioned, there's two of them. One is a sidewalk area with some benches coming into the property, and then, as I mentioned, towards the center of the property, there's a green space area with a fire pit. It has the mail kiosk in that area as well. And in this particular project, we have a poly cart storage area. This will be a private hauler, poly cart scenario that they'll bring out of their garages, but we created a pad so the private hauler has a place on garbage day to actually go and pick up the units. And that bottom image, it's got a little cut off there, but it shows the screening for the poly cart storage area. That'll only be used on garbage day. They'll be put back in the garage after garbage day. And with that in mind, that's the extent of the presentation. I'm here for any questions you may have now. I'm also here to answer any questions that the public may have regarding our project.
Can I ask real quick, that last image that you had, the space for the garbage carts, is that enough for all seven of them to have theirs in that space on garbage day?
We believe it is, Ms. Jones, but we'll verify that. It's deep enough, and we can widen the length. We just put it at a spot that was a little bit past, you know, we put it as far down the drive as we could so it's not front and center with all the rears of the residences, but if we need to widen it some, I believe we'd look at a calculation on that. It should fit them, but we'll verify that.
Other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. All right. So we will open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak either for or against this item for the public hearings tonight. If you come forward, you will please state your name and address, and then make your comments to the Planning Commission. You can limit your comments, please, to three minutes or less. So again, the public hearing is open on this item. If anybody would like to speak, please come forward. Okay. Then we will close the public hearing and ask what other questions or comments we have from the Planning Commission.
If no questions or comments, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Any opposed?
Abstention.
One abstention. Mr. Lawrence. Okay. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Our next item, Item B, is a zoning application to amend the One East College PUD zoning for approximately 2.42 acres located along East College Street, North Spring Street, East Lidle Street, and North Church Street. 705 Fourth Avenue South Holding Company, LLC, is the applicant. Ms. Kerr?
Thank you again, Chair Jones. The applicant is requesting to amend the One East College PUD located at the 100th block of East College Street and North Spring Street to allow modifications to the site and building design and uses. The property is approximately 2.42 acres. It's a former location of the First United Methodist Church as well as Franklin Synergy Bank. The One East College PUD was originally approved on May 21, 2020. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the PUD to modify building uses, exterior materials and design of the buildings, parking amenities, and the sitting of the structures. The building setbacks will remain the same. The approved PUD consists of a mix of uses, including hotel, residential living, office, retail, restaurants, parking garage, a police precinct, and refurbishing the existing church, sanctuary, and bell tower. The overall residential square foot is 185,634 square foot, and a density per acre is 64.46 with 156 residential dwelling units. The amendment to the PUD would propose that the South Church and East Lidle Building be a four-story mixed-use building with retail office on the first floor and the upper three floors consisting of residential dwelling units. The amendment also includes the conversion of the hotel into a four-story mixed-use building along East College Street with office and retail on the first and second floor, including a satellite police precinct on the street level, and third and fourth floors to be residential dwelling units. The four-story apartment building fronting North Spring Street and East Lidle Street will be residential dwelling units. The proposed parking garage is eight stories above grade, includes 200 non-dedicated parking spaces. Proposed above the parking garage would be two or possibly three stories of additional residential condo units. The overall height of the parking garage condo building is 148 feet. Combined residential dwelling units is 191 dwelling units with a density of 78.93 dwelling units per acre. Residential amenities proposed for the development will include a fitness center and a private courtyard pool with a sun deck, a gated promenade area with green space and grilling and seating areas, and a gated dog park. The proposed plan would also include a rooftop plaza as an exclusive amenity for the condo units. The development will provide two pedestrian entrances from North Church Street and West College Street and a single motor vehicle access from the parking garage on East Lidle Street. The proposed amendment has designed a 2,640-square-foot space for a rooftop restaurant bar located on the eighth floor of the parking garage. In order to include the restaurant component, the project lease must be completed by May 30, 2021. The total building area is 43,131 square feet. Exceptions to the zoning regulations are 35% of the required 490 parking spaces to be seven foot, six inches wide, compact spaces, and the remainder to be eight foot, six inches wide as opposed to the nine-foot-wide spaces required by the zoning ordinance. Maximum building height to be 148 feet instead of the maximum overall height in the CBD of 75 feet. The subject property is surrounded to the south and west with the CBD district. Properties to the north and east are zoned office general residential. Staff is supportive of this rezoning request because the proposed land uses will be compatible with surrounding land uses, compact, dense development, and desirable in and around downtown and promotes walkability. The proposed development will contribute to the vitality and quality of life of the downtown, continuing the positive trend towards reinvestment in the area. And the zoning plan is generally consistent with the recommendations of the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the North Highland Avenue Study Plan. The applicant is available to answer any questions and give a presentation, a video of sorts, and the Planning Commission will need to make, have a public hearing and make a recommendation to City Council.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Taylor, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr. Matt Taylor of SEC. Appreciate you giving us the time to be here tonight. I'm accompanied by several members of the design team, Mr. Mark Klein, the architect, Mr. John Harney, representing the clients here, as well as Mr. Brian Davis of the ownership team itself. We do have a request to amend our previously approved PUD at One East College. I think that all of you know where the site is. Didn't want to go over the revisions. Ms. Kerr did a good job walking through the individual details of the project. Like I said, at workshop, Page 16 of your book walks through all those revisions. We've got 35 more residential dwellings here. We did take out the hotel. That was the primary change with this program. However, we have preserved and designed the internal portion of the building that fronts on College Street that it could be converted to a hotel if that opportunity arises in the future. We also have added the potential for the rooftop restaurant, as Ms. Kerr indicated. We're currently pursuing a lease with that, so we're very hopeful that will play out. We also added more on-street parking due to the redesign. We have kept our commitment to keep the existing church. I know that was very important to the city as well as the community, so we plan to repurpose that and are pursuing several potential users for that currently. We also increased the amenities here. We added a pool, added the sun deck, grilling areas, so increased the amenities over what was there before. Here's a comparison of the elevations. So this is, if you were standing on East College looking at it, so the church would be on the left, and so the top picture is what was previously approved. So obviously on the right would have been the hotel. Below is our current design. You see a much more prominent promenade in the center there. This is looking from North Spring Street, looking over the property, so the top would have been previously approved. The bottom is what we're proposing now. So the mass of the property, the characteristics are the same. And then this would have been from North Church Street. It's church on the right. You can see in both, it's still there. Brick tones here probably match a little better. It looks more like a cohesive project than even previously. And then this would be from Lidle Street, looking back. So the top on the left would have been office, and then this is, the bottom is what we're proposing now as a total project. And then we do have a brief video that the architect pulled together, and it really highlights the details of the project itself. We didn't, we're not able to get Samuel Jackson to narrate it, but it is a very good video. So this is just coming down from the top. You can start to see some of the amenities built in, some of that rooftop area, the potential for that restaurant. And this is going to come down at the intersection of college and church, right at the existing church. You start to get a feel for the streetscape, the on-street parking, the street trees, the sidewalks, and then the form of the buildings themselves. And then this would be at the entrance, or at the intersection of church and Lidle. And then we'll move back toward MTSU along Lidle Street here. You see the entrance to the parking garage, some of those balconies that will be on the residential units. You'll notice you never see the parking garage. We've wrapped the entire parking garage with the project, so it'll be very aesthetically pleasing. And then this will move back up Spring Street. And you can see in between there, some of our amenity area between the two buildings. And then this will be back at Spring and College. So this has a few more seconds, but we think the project's in improvement. It's still a good-quality project, bringing a lot of people living downtown, as well as activate both church and college at the same time with that commercial use. So we hope we have your support. We'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions for Mr. Taylor before we open the public hearing?
I've got one quick question, just as it relates to the total height, to give me a little bit of bearing. The NHC Tower back here, about how tall is it? Do you know? I mean, guess? I mean, guess?
I would say that it is in the same realm as far as ti, as height, if you're sitting there. I would, this one, uh, this site, I think, sits higher in ele, ground elevation, and so it's probably going to be a little taller. I think that I did a, early on, I did a comparison between this and the Judicial Centers Tower.
Yeah.
And I think the tower there and the top of this building are relatively going to be the same elevation, uh, so it, it was around the same height as well. Hundred and fifty is the NHC. So they're basically, they're within a couple of feet of each other.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, we will open the public hearing and again ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak either for or against this item. Please state your name and address if you come to the podium, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Who's up first? All right.
Hello. My name is Keith Beckman. I have Beckman's Prescription Shop that's on the corner of Spring and College Street. Um, and I came to the last meeting. I just want to kind of reemphasize the things that I had pointed out previously, uh, to the panel, just to make sure that businesses that are around here do get the respect, um, that we can continue to operate under the same circumstances that we have, um, without much interruption with this project going on. We're excited about the project. We look forward to, you know, bringing more business, more activity to, to the downtown area. Uh, we just want to still be able to operate our operations, um, while these things move forward. And especially during these times, we're seeing a need for healthcare. Um, we don't want people to turn elsewhere. We want to be there for our community and, and be able to provide these things for them continually without much interruption. So that's, that's my only request, is that, you know, moving forward, we still honor these things for all of us that have been here for so long. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming out again tonight.
Good evening. Andrea Lowery, one-twenty-six South Maple Street. Uh, I think there are a lot of improvements that have come from this, so I certainly agree with it. I do want to call the group's attention.
Please make all your comments to the planning commission. Thank you.
I want to call the group's attention to the exterior and particularly looking at the shot where you had the church and the, the facade of the new building. I think its interior sounds excellent. The exterior, there was one side, the main entrances of the condominiums have the curvature with what looks to possibly be limestone. The key factors, architectural details of the church that we've worked hard to keep are curves and limestone. I think the brick matches better, but if just a few not-too-expensive touches to the exterior, besides those three curves that you see at the entrance to the condominiums, if that could be repeated, at least on the cityscape of each side, it would blend in with the property motif of the church. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lowery. Appreciate you coming out. Who's next? Nobody? Okay. We'll close the public hearing and ask for comments and questions from the planning commission.
Hey, Matt, I don't know if you're the right person, but, uh, back to Mr. Beckman's question, he had the same, as he said, he had the same questions at the, or at least, I think, at the last public hearing. And we did discuss it a little bit. I don't know if Sam was part of that discussion or not, but, um, I, I think that it would be helpful for everyone to understand how this construction process might work, um, and that, you know, so that we are not negatively affecting the surrounding businesses.
Yes, sir. So I don't, uh, I, you're right. I do recognize that, um, question from, uh, about a year ago, and I think that we would, we would keep the same commitment we had then, which was, you know, we don't anticipate long closures of any road. Um, I, I will say, and I think I said it then, was, you know, some roads will be closed at certain times, uh, for deliveries, obviously, uh, when you're working in the downtown area. Um, it's a little different construction process. Obviously, any of those closures will be kept to a minimum. We try to utilize the parking spaces that you see there to the best, as best as we can, and so we don't want to have any more impact on the neighbors. Um, we want to start out on the right foot. We think we're going to bring a lot of clientele during the construction process as well as post-construction, and so, um, we would minimize those and obviously coordinate any of that with, um, city public works and the transportation department, so those closures are communicated appropriately to, uh, the neighbors and the community, so.
Yeah, my comment would be is we just want to try to make sure that we're not eliminating access to a particular business. Uh, you know, it may be that, there may be one way in, and especially, I'm familiar with Mr. Beckman's, it's, it's one way in, one way out in reference to, um, the drive-thru and then kind of even the parking area. Um, so I, we just got to be cognizant of that, both from the city side of things and from the construction process, so hopefully the developer, developer hears that also.
They do, and, and we've talked about that fairly extensively, and so I think most of the time the, the deliveries would close, you know, maybe A lane. You know, if you're doing a utility connection or something like that, that may cause you to be in both lanes for a short time, but I would even anticipate most of that to occur in the, at the nighttime.
Okay.
Due to the surrounding areas.
Do you, while you're up there, do you want to respond to Ms. Lowery's questions or comments?
I will, uh, let Mr. Klein, uh, that one's probably going to be over my pay grade.
Okay.
One, one question for me on that.
Yes, sir.
With the changes from the hotel, since it's not a hotel now, it looked like that you have more parking on the street.
Yes.
Wouldn't, that should improve, at least on Beckman's side, because now you've got a much wider area to, to work with.
Yes, sir. After construction, it would definitely help. During construction, it's probably going to be about the same, but after construction, it would definitely help that area, add more parking through there. Because I think right now the on-street through there is parallel. Um, this is going to add angled, uh, parking through there, and so I would say that probably roughly doubles, uh, the amount of parking that would be available along that street front edge.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
I'll make one quick comment too before, as he's coming up about the, uh, the businesses. Obviously, my office has just been next door to a five-story building that was torn down and is being rebuilt right now, and, I mean, I've watched really closely for road closures, and we haven't had very many. I mean, I, I, I think they've done a really good job. I mean, I hope that these guys will be able to do a very similar job, uh, as to what's happened next door to us. I mean, I really can only think of about one time that one road was closed and the other one was open during that time, so, uh, it does give me some hope that that, that is possible. I mean, now, I will tell you, the sidewalks are cut off and there's, you know, big scaffoldings and stuff like that with nets and all that to catch debris, but, um, it's been very passable, um, for the entirety of the process, would be my, my opinion also. Hopefully that's, we can follow that. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
My name is Bart Klein with Klein-Swinni Associates. We are very sensitive to the church and, uh, really the motif and design, uh, down to the brick that we picked for the building was actually modeled off the church and it's a special blend. Uh, we did put a lot of arches in, if you notice, on the main elevation to the church. The whole building is kind of arched all the way through, and we're just not completely there yet, so we'll, we'll, you know, we always want to do better every iteration, so what you're seeing now is, you know, far in design, but we got to engineer it and all this stuff, so as we go, little details will be added, and we're very sensitive to it, and, you know, we're happy to have the churches as something to follow. We, we treat that as the jewel on the site, so the best we can.
Any other questions for Mr. Klein while he's up there?
I, I would say that I certainly think that each time I've seen it over the past year or two that we've been looking at it, it just seems to get better and better every time we see it, so if it can just continue to, um, as you're working on it and tweaking all those things, just to always be making improvements, I just, no, we'll be excited about what we see in the end, so.
The last question I have, Matt, is, um, Amelia said May twenty-one. You got it? So it's, it's around the corner.
Yes, sir. So the, in order for us to be able to do the rooftop restaurant, we've got to know when we move into construction documents, and so, you know, we're just projecting out a little bit, um, because we would anticipate being in council, obviously probably middle of May, and so we would immediately start to move into the construction document phase, assuming everything goes good there, so, um, we, we just got to know that with the way the building puts together.
I'm with you.
So I can assure you, some people are working very hard to make, make that happen, so we're all pretty excited about that opportunity.
Any other questions, comments from the planning commission? Any other concerns?
Since, I'm going to ask one question. It's going to be a follow-up on Ms. Lowery's. I, I don't know if it's above Matt's pay grade. It's way above my pay grade, but how, how realistic? I'm not even exactly sure where she was talking about on here. I assume you picked up on where she was talking about. I mean, I, I guess what I need to know is how realistic on a scale of one to ten is it to make any level of what she was suggesting? I mean, I, I just wouldn't know. Is that a, is that a straight-up five, or is it, well, you know, we can, but we're going to have to do some work, or is it, it really just can't happen?
No, I mean, the condo entry, we know we need improvement, so what you're seeing is it's getting there. So we're going to have an arch, but we need to work on the arch, you know, put some cast on in it. We understand the, we want to have an entry too for the condo, so it screams out, hey, this is the lobby, so it's just not developed. So I'd say it's a ten on, on getting to where you need it to be. And we do have a simulated stone, and, you know, after the meeting, if you want to see some of the materials, we're more than happy to come check it out, and, uh, you know, we want a good project too.
Awesome, thanks.
If there's no further comments from the planning commission, I'll make a motion that we approve with the hopes of making the improvements along the way and also working with the downtown businesses. I think everybody understands that. Subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you all very much. We're very excited about the project. All right. Our next item, item C, is a zoning application for approximately one-hundred-and-sixteen-point-seven acres located along Veterans Parkway, south of Burnt Knob Road, west of Blackman Road, and north of Vaughn Road, to be zoned to GDO III, and for one-hundred-and-one-point-seven acres to be rezoned from P to CH. City Administration Department is the applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much, planning commission members. Um, this third public hearing this evening is for you to consider a zoning application submitted to the planning department by, on behalf of the City Administration Department. You can see there's a map on the screen before you that shows the boundaries of the area for which we're setting a zoning change request. The entire property, um, is one-hundred-and-sixteen-point-seven acres, and the request is to zone both the green and yellow to GDO III, Gateway Design Overlay District, uh, the sub-district III. And the map also shows you a area that's zoned, that's colored green, and the green area is one-hundred-and-one-point-seven acres, and the application before you is to consider rezoning that property from our P-zone, P is Park, to CH, Commercial Highway District. So if this application were to be approved, it would be, um, one-hundred-and-one-point-seven acres zoned Commercial Highway District and GDO III, and fifteen acres zoned Park and GDO III. The subject area is mostly surrounded with developed ex-urban and suburban lots. That's just a fancy way of saying larger, single-family detached subdivision. The southeast border of the property runs along Vaughn Road and Interstate Eight Forty, and you can see there's, the interchange is just to the south of the property as well. The study area does encompass on three sides a single-family home, and that's the little, um, the little rectangle you see along Blackman Road, twenty-four fifteen Blackman Road. That is a house. I believe it's probably a rental house because the property owner's address is a different address than the property address, and, um, it is not a part of this application, but I did want to point out because it looks like an anomaly, but, um, it, it was a decision made by our administration department to not include that parcel. The Rogers Group Rock Quarry is located along Burnt Knob, and you may be familiar with that. Just, this property was zoned Park in two thousand seventeen in support of the community's vision to have a park on the west side of Murfreesboro. I think most of us are aware of that process. It did have quite a bit of public input with Kimbley Horn as the, uh, folks who developed the master plan. Since that time, the city council and city administration, so their vision for this area has changed, mostly because of its proximity to Interstate Eight Forty, having that visibility, and that this property probably has more use to the city, uh, being zoned Commercial Highway, and then possibly, um, looking for some development here. We don't have any plans for, uh, alternative park location, and that's not really the subject of tonight's public hearing. It's to consider zoning this property CH, um, and so I did want to kind of mention that. As far as anticipating some questions we might have about street or roadway improvements, the city of Murfreesboro has street improvements planned for Burnt Knob Road, including the intersection with Blackman Road to Veterans Parkway, although no specific timeframe has been identified for the improvements. Staff anticipates the timing will be in relation to the level of development on the subject property. Larger, uh, developments, of course, would need road improvement sooner, and if it were some smaller project, it wouldn't necessarily trigger that. We do anticipate the timing, of course, will be in relation to that. Signalized intersections are anticipated at Blackman and Burnt Knob, along Burnt Knob at the city's property access, and at Veterans Parkway and Burnt Knob. Timing, of course, will be determined when the road projects meet the merits or warrants for signalization, but I just wanted you to know that there was anticipation for that. And according to our Public Infrastructure Department, TDOT is working on a plan to signalize the interchange ramps at Veterans Parkway. The city's representatives submitted an application to zone this property to CH, Commercial Highway District. The CH district is intended to permit development and continued maintenance of general commercial uses located in a linear fashion along highways and near transportation facilities and industrial areas. It's the hope of the City Administration Department that having this property already zoned CH will be an additional enticement for development of this property. Staff has included an excerpt of the zoning ordinance that tells you the list of uses that are permitted in the CH district. Um, you may remember, um, at the beginning of this presentation, I mentioned that the request also is to zone this property to GDO III. The GDO III overlay, um, of course, I know that you all are more familiar with the GDO than probably anywhere else, anywhere else in the state of Tennessee, anybody else in the state of Tennessee, but it does, in addition to have those aesthetic requirements, it has additional use restrictions, so in the packet, I also provided you a list of those use restrictions. They are different from GDO III to GDO I. The city's property here is being proposed to be GDO III. There will be an application following this where there's a request to put GDO I on the property. GDO III is more restrictive and has higher standards than the, um, GDO I, so it is the more restrictive of all for the GDO overlay districts. This property is, of course, identified on our future land use map, and the designation is BP Business Park. That's not like a nineteen-nineties version of a business park where you have industrial developments sharing a common road. It's, um, the way it's described in the future land use map, it's more of a modern version of that where it could be tech businesses or offices or campus-style offices, not so much manufacturing or distribution. So with that in mind, the, um, CH zoning is not inconsistent with the plan. It doesn't contradict that plan, and so, um, that is not something that you need to address tonight. It is the recommendation of city administration staff that you recommend approval of the zoning change for this property, and then forward your recommendation to city council. Mr. Sam Huddleston would like to speak on the matter, and if you would allow him, he'd like to, uh, present to you before your public hearing. If you have any questions at this point, I'll be glad to answer them.
Questions for Ms. Green before we hear from Mr. Huddleston?
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Ms. Green.
Good evening, Chair Jones, members of the planning commission. I don't have, um, an extensive statement to make, uh, about our request, but we are here to request the rezoning of the one-hundred-and-one acres to Commercial Highway with fifteen remaining, uh, park. Ms. Green, I think, did a, a great job explaining the current zoning and the context. Ms. Green, I think, did a great job explaining the current zoning and the context. I think I want to just maybe provide a little insight into city staff's thinking and where we've been and maybe where we're headed. And so interstate interchanges give communities unique opportunities, but they are limited. And as we know, we've spent a good bit of effort to encourage TDOT to build interstate interchanges dating back to the 1990s when we contracted with TDOT to add the interchanges we have today, including this one. Since the detailed planning in this area started in the early 2000s on the Veterans Parkway interchange, you know, city staff seen that as an entry, a west entry into our community. And we've always envisioned land uses and development along that that would represent our city as a west entry as you're coming in to that side of our community from 840 and even from Highway 96 West. And so we think that reinforces that. You know, the other interesting thing is we've received numerous inquiries about economic development opportunities here. But the one thing we find out is we lack zoning. Additionally, on an infrastructure standpoint, we also need some utility extension in there. And so our Rutherford County Chamber representatives, economic consultants, development consultants have all said to us, this property is, you know, has a high potential for development, for job opportunities, but it lacks zoning and it lacks utilities. And so we're here tonight to request that rezoning so to put the city in a better position to maybe see our vision there and also to see the potential employment opportunities that come with that. You know, we really envision this, and I think Ms. Green said it best, as a business park or a tech park and not the types of uses maybe that we envisioned from the 1990s. We've had opportunities for warehouses and those sorts of industrial opportunities here which we rejected, saying that's not the vision. That's not the appropriate use here. And so we really envision this being an office park with opportunities, white-collar jobs, to the extent that we can make those available and attract those users. We think that's a great complement to what we anticipate would be commercial interstate interchange uses on the adjacent properties, privately-held properties that are next to us. This request does reduce the park zoning. It reduces it to 15 acres. And we do, our development plans, our development concepts so far have included a much more significant community park than that. We're not seeing this as a place for athletic fields and structured athletics, but maybe a community park that would be available to the residents in the area as well as the users and occupants of the business park. And so that total looks more like 20 to 40 acres, depending on, you know, how we incorporate some of those park elements into the development plan. What you should keep in mind on that is that park elements can go in Commercial Highway zoning, but Commercial Highway uses cannot go in park zoning. And so we held this to a 15-acre area because we knew enough about the development of the land that this area needs to be reserved for the park just based on the other things that we know about the property. I'm not here to make a commitment about a west park. I don't have that ability. That's a decision by our mayor and council and something that we'll work through with them through our community improvement project process and our budgeting process. What I can tell this group about the city's plans is we continue to pursue and plan opportunities for west park, for park opportunities west of I-24. This one, this opportunity will include a smaller community park, but we've still got a lot of options and we'll still continue to pursue those. And I do believe that our city administration will be making some progress and some announcements on that very soon. I'm available for questions before or after the public hearing as are our other members of the city staff. And we do recommend your approval of this request. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston. We have other comments or questions for Mr. Huddleston or general comments?
I don't have a question for Mr. Huddleston, I don't think. But I will make a comment as it relates to this before we get started in the public hearing, you know, to sort of build a little bit on what Ms. Green and Mr. Huddleston have already said. Just, you know, the council several years ago purchased a couple of pieces of property, this one and another piece on Highway 96. And like Mr. Huddleston, I can't make statements for what the council exactly will do. I'm only one vote. I can say how I feel about it. But we bought a couple of pieces of property, very large tracts of property, with the idea that we were going to explore west park space for the west side of Murfreesboro. You know, we went through a long process with this piece of property where we tried to look at designs and different ideas and what we could or couldn't do. We even got a kind of a quote on it, which happened to come back. And one thing that hasn't been mentioned here happened to come back about twice as much as what we expected on the front end of buying this purchase. I think the difference was somewhere between 25 million and 45 million. We started at 25 and it ended up at 45. That clearly has a bearing on whether or not we can afford to build a park on this piece of property. And so we obviously are going to look at all of our options, including the other piece of property. So I think it's just as simple as that. I do want to make sure and say that, that I'm committed, as a council person, member of the planning commission, to continue to pursue, you know, as much park space as we can get. And I'll wait for the public hearing and make any more statements. But just want to make sure and kind of set that as a little precursor to where we are.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lyons. Appreciate that. Any other comments before we open the public hearing? Okay, we will open the public hearing, and we'll ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak for or against this item. If you were not in here or were not able to hear before, if you come forward to speak, you will have three minutes to make your comments. You will state your name and your address when you come to the podium. And any comments you make will be made directly to the planning commission and not to other members of the audience or staff. So that being said, we'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak.
Hello?
Hello?
My name is Alice Hilton. I live on Gritten Court off of Burntob, almost exactly 500 feet from the property in question. I have lived there since 2013, so I'm very well aware of all the conversations that went on around purchasing this land. I've spent the last five or six days researching and trying to come up with an argument, but I don't have one. If you guys zone this CH, you can't get this land back. You can say it's CH, it could still be part of a park. It still could be this, it could be that. It could be a Walmart, a Waffle House, or a Sam's Club. I don't know. You don't have a site plan. You're asking, not asking, you're rezoning this Commercial Highway when actually, if you're really trying to attract business parks, OG would actually be the appropriate Section 20 to use. There's no site plan. It's comical for you to ask the residents to be okay with this after five years of promising ballparks, soccer fields. At one point, there was an aquatic sportscom. We have nothing in Blackman. We don't have a library, we don't have a park, we don't have a greenway, we don't have a stoplight. The roads have gotten worse. You approve more and more single-family houses day after day. There's 800 single-family homes going into Shelton Square right now. Eight hundred. And you say you don't have the money for a park? All we want is some walking trails and a pavilion, some picnic tables. That's really about it. No one's asking for a $50 million sportscom. It's insulting to the people who've spent their lives in Blackman community to take this away from us and to make it a Walmart, or a Thorntons, or a Pilot Station. Because that's what I hear when I hear 840 access and interchange. Cracker Barrel, Waffle House, Walmart, Thorntons, Pilot. 500 feet from my house in a beautiful community that also holds the burial grounds of the founder of Blackman community. The actual historical burial plot of the people who founded that area. And, you know, I came in here with lots of points about the ecology and the trees and the wildlife and the deer that have been running in the roads and the turkeys running in the roads and the water that runs off. I don't think it matters, you guys. I don't. That's all I have to say. Please don't rezone the same thing besides park.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton. Who else would like to speak tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Bailey.
Chairman Jones, Planning Commission. John L. Beatty, Baker Road 5104 in Blackman. The comments that she just made were real good. But looking at this picture here, Sam, you're going to put all this park now at one corner, which we've talked about a park probably 10 or 12 years from whatever came about in 17. And we've had all these meetings, proposals using the whole ground. And I know city is hurting for money. You can say that y'all in the real estate business now. But I think instead of putting a park right on this corner, you could move it back in here some. And like she was talking about, Lineball Library's been looking for a place. And you could incorporate the library in the center of part of this. And then you could have more walking trails. People could use the library, go to the park at the same time. This is a totally different plan than what we were looking at what, three years ago, Sam? And we need some green space. And she's talking about the cemetery. That's the original Blackman Cemetery. It's 50 by 50, beautiful rock wall, some of it's down. And the gate and all, that was made by the blacksmith shop that was located at Blackman where the stores still are. They had a blacksmith shop. And that gate was made back in 1800s. That's on there. It could be wonderful walking trails and all. I know y'all have shrunk it to what we were wanting, but you could come in there with, you've got 15 acres on here. And it's not actually, this is what you're zoning. But I think if I could look at it, put 40, 45 acres in there, includes a library in there, you'd have a much better space than sitting it all right here on the corner of Burntob and Blackman, which is a four-way stop and is very busy. And I know all the infrastructure's got to come. And all, whatever you do, it's got to come. I thank you. Wish I would look at it, give her some more acres. And I think the library would be a good fit right in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Who else would like to speak tonight?
Council members, I'm Brandon Hilton. I live at 122 Gritten Court in Murfreesboro. So I just wanted to follow up on what my wife said, which basically it comes down to this, right? So there is no plan for this land at this time. So what is the rush to rezone this land with no plan, right? Like, I mean, it could be anything. It could be McDonald's, truck stops, and whatever. I mean, you know, it's nice to promise all these white-collar jobs and everything is beautiful and this and that and the other. But the times that's actually come to fruition in this city are few and far between. I mean, I just don't have any confidence that we're going to end up with a business headquarters over there or something like that. So to me, it's just disingenuous that you come in to want to rezone this property when, in honesty, you're going to sell it to the highest bidder. It doesn't matter who it is. If the Walmart family comes and wants to buy it, you're going to sell it to them. So, you know, at least do us the dignity, since you've taken away our park, to get a plan first and then come back to have this rezoned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton.
John Marshall. I represent 4810 Veterans Parkway, which is our family church and cemetery, the Beasley family, which was what Veterans Parkway was named before it was changed. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And I hadn't planned on it, which my wife would say would get me in trouble. But I understand the pressures that you are facing to balance many things between jobs, increased tax revenues and services for our citizens. And I appreciate you trying to balance that and with a very valuable property now that obviously, with the pressures you're facing, presents itself some opportunities for you to serve in other ways. But I would say that this is the heart of that community that my family joined in 1804. And there's not much left. If there was, if there were available land in the Blackman area, you would find that the county school systems would be purchasing it for schools. They can't find it. These opportunities are very limited and very small. So when you find green space that you can preserve for the hearts of our communities that still have identities left, that haven't been taken away by growth and all that comes with it, it's a unique opportunity. Our land is always going to increase in value. Your investments that you're making in properties and parks all throughout this town have a significant increase in its value. The greatest value is taking the opportunity to balance that as best you can with the value that it is for generations to come and the opportunity to have that space available to them so that they can enjoy those things and see the community and the landscape that it was when we settled, which I know is still difficult with so many things being pressed upon us. I would just plead with what Mr. Beatty said is 15 acres is, I understand that it can still be incorporated with a different zoning and the park can increase in size. But I understand also realistically that if the zoning is that wide on the map, that it creates a lot of opportunities that could take away from that. So I would just strongly encourage you all to increase the size of the park of what's intended for the 15 acres and balance that a little bit better with the idea of what, I know there's no specific thing, but what could be there. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Who else would like to speak tonight?
My name is John Harney. I reside at 6748 West Gum Road. And I listened to several of the comments tonight, and all of them are valid in different ways. But our company has been involved in development out on the Veterans 840 corridor for a while. Originally did Berkshire back before there was even the thought of an interchange there. And most recently, we actually asked for the West Lawn Project, a portion of this to be rezoned from townhomes to office, commercial, medical, which has turned into basically all medical office buildings going up. But I think what this property represents is a great opportunity to do something really nice on the west side of town. And I don't disagree with what was said about maybe 15 acres. It's not enough park area, maybe it needs to be more. But we've visited a lot of office parks around the country from Atlanta and Phoenix and various places. You can intertwine nice, white-collar office corporate headquarters in with green space, and everybody wins. You have a nice project. It's spread out so it doesn't look like it's so jammed together. I would agree with the lady that spoke previously. I wouldn't want to see a Pilot there. I wouldn't want to see a Walmart, those kind of uses. But I think there's a great opportunity here to attract some good commercial, office, corporate headquarters, those sort of things. But the one thing I know by being in the real estate business a long time in commercial, more and more now, if you don't have the utilities and the zoning in place, you don't get on the shortlist for a lot of the target companies that are looking around the country because they've all run into a situation where that municipality said, oh, it will rezonate for you. And then it doesn't happen. So you've got to position the property in the right mode to attract the kind of users that I think would be complementary to the area. But at the same time, you, as the planning commission and the city council, you have got the keys to make sure that what site plan comes in and what use, you control that. And with the GDO III, it's got another whole level of control over it. So I think, you know, like John L. said, I think 15 acres may not be enough, but intermixed with some good planned office, white-collar and tech park-type uses, everybody wins. We get good jobs, we keep a very strong tax base that's going to go way beyond a $50 million investment. It would be easy to see you'd have 3 or 4 million, $100 million worth of capital investment and tax base out there with jobs that are brought to this city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Harney. Thanks for coming out. Who else would like to speak tonight? Who else would like to speak tonight?
No. Not him.
I'll be nice. Steve Sandlin, live at thirty-four oh-seven Valley Bin Road, just right up the street and in the Foothill subdivision. Thank you, appreciate your letting us speak tonight. I just came from the courthouse, so I'm out of breath. Just apologize. A lot of things that's already been said, I agree with, and I'd like for this planning commission to understand where the community's at and what we've been told before and what's on the screen now as far as park space is not what was told to us at the beginning. From my understanding, this was out of the urban growth boundary. They came to the community, they came to the church and actually talked to us about the community getting behind it because they thought park would be the selling point for this property. And we jumped in headfirst and said, we're behind you. We want a park out here, we need a park out here, we would love to have a park out here. Fifteen acres is not what we were thinking of. I think the whole acreage, you know, might be a little big, but like some of the others have said, with some proper planning, which y'all do, with some other uses, like a library and some other things, that that would be helpful for the community. A lot of history here on this property. I know the McDonald's that sold the property to you, and, you know, they were told when city bought it, it's gonna be a park. Our church, North Boulevard Church of Christ, I don't know if the representative made it here or not to speak, but I'm a member of North Boulevard Church of Christ, so I'll say, we bought that piece of property across from you over here that's in green now, that's wanting to be zoned, commercial highway or whatever zoning that you're talking about now. They bought that piece of property to build a church on because it's gonna be a park, not commercial highway, not other uses. So we need a park. We've got a company right now that's contacted the county that's, would take this whole piece right here and build a park on it that would just be unbelievably nice, that would bring in a lot of revenue to Rutherford County, bring in a lot of revenue to the city of Murfreesboro. And it's kind of like spring fleeing on steroids. So this is something that I would propose that we talk to this company, that the city talk to this company. I was told a few days ago, when I called the number, it was gonna be fifteen acres. I talked to a couple of other representatives of the city, and they told me forty-five acres. And they are in high positions on council, and so they did not even in quite understanding, I don't think, that it's only fifteen acres. So the community's being let down by just a small amount of acreage as being a park. And so there's a lot of other things that has to happen here. You've got to get the utilities here, you've got to get the roads up to par, and that's not done. So just a blanket statement of this will be done, or without proper planning, you've got to do this before you can rezone it, I think. Be glad to help you with it in any way possible. The county and the city works very good together. Blackman, a lot of history, a lot of farmland, and we understand, seriously, it's not gonna continue to be farmland anymore. You know, we'd love, much rather love to see a park here than, I don't know how many houses you can put on this thing, you know, you go to PUD and you can stack them in here, you know, and it would be overwhelming. So with proper planning, this would be a great adventure and something I'd be glad to help you, and I know Mr. Harney and some others would love to join in and try to help you on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandlin. Who else would like to speak tonight? Okay, if there's no one else, we will close the public hearing. And if we have some items to address on here.
I can address a couple right quick.
That'd be great.
Perhaps.
Mr. Lawrence.
First of all, I don't, I don't think this was outside of the urban growth boundary. We're just right across the street from Shelton Square, well, we're sandwiched in between Shelton Square and Berkshire. I think it's inside the urban growth boundary, I don't know if that matters a whole lot, but just want to kind of correct that. I do want to address something to the effect of the disingenuous comment. You know, you might go down the road here and take a look at what city property, what property the city owns. There's not a Walmart on it, there's not a truck stop on it, we didn't sell it to the highest bidder, and we're being pretty doggone patient about trying to get the right kind of jobs there, and it's sitting as a piece of green space. You know, we, I just, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, you know, well, I don't, I'm not gonna agree that somehow it's some kind of disingenuous to say that we're gonna try to, no, we're gonna, we didn't, nobody ever said everything's always a guarantee and no matter what, this is exactly what's gonna happen. We're looking at options, we're still looking at options. What I was gonna say is, as the city owns this, we do have control over what goes there. The council will have to approve anything that's sold there for what purpose. So there is a level of protection there. You might look back in your research and see that, I personally was one of the ones, and if Mr. Harney would have known this before, I could have got him to answer this question, the property that was straight across the street from that, there were people who fought for it to make sure that it was not gonna be a truck stop, it was not gonna be a junkyard, and I was one of them.
Excuse me. There is no discussion from the floor. You all had your chance to speak, and it is now turn, our turn to speak and to discuss the matter that is up in front of us.
The point being, we do have a track record of that stuff not happening, and that I'm committed to making sure whatever goes here is a good project. And, you know, frankly, I want to see it be more than fifteen acres, but still, that's gonna depend on what we do on the other piece of property that we bought to look at for parks. If we put a hundred and fifty-acre park a mile and a half down the road, it may not be, need to be more than fifteen acres here. You know, that's something we gotta try to figure out in the budget and a lot of other things we gotta try to incorporate into that. If we only put a ten-acre park on the other piece of property, then I'm gonna say it needs to be bigger than fifteen acres here. So those are things, yes, we do need to work through, but I'm just kind of telling you that to give you sort of where I think on it and to address a couple of things that were said.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Other comments from the planning commission? Any questions?
To add on to what Mr. Harney said, I've been to some pretty large corporate parks all across the country, and that you can intertwine a park pretty well through a spread-out corporate facility with walking trails and bike trails and some, I've seen some with basketball courts even just in the middle of the corporate headquarters. And like Mr. Lawrence said, city owns it, we can hold to who gets to buy part of that property, who gets to move into it, and the city does have a pretty good track record of not putting bad stuff on city-owned property. I agree with that.
I do think it's very important to understand the restrictions that the GDO III would have on the property. And even though we're looking at a potential commercial highway zoning, the GDO III overlay is what puts those additional restrictions that may or may not have read in the zoning ordinance, if you were reading through just on commercial highway, you have to also read what is required and what is, you know, can be allowed in a GDO III. So that's probably where it takes care of all the Walmarts and all those things that, plus, just as the other members have stated, I, like most of the rest of the ones of us that have been in here for a while and been around Murfreesboro for a while, I'm pretty proud of a lot of the things that we've done as a city here in Murfreesboro and want to keep only doing positive things for the city. So, Mr. Huddleston?
Thank you, Chair Jones, excellent, excellent points about the land use restrictions that are in the GDO. You know, a lot of the corporate interest in this that we have talked to, they've asked us a question, how, how do we know that the city will help protect our investment? Because we talked to individuals and companies that, you know, they're looking to invest thirty to forty million dollars. And so part of our answer back is, we will manage the land use restrictions, we will use our zoning process, and we'll even use private restrictions that the city can place on this property to help manage what goes here. And so those tools are available to us and we'll propose those and plan those as users and development opportunities come along. I did want to go back and talk just a minute or provide some color commentary maybe on the zoning versus the actual park space. And so, you know, as we considered this rezoning, we wanted to reserve a part of it as park. This land tells us that this area is the better place for that. It needs an east-west road. That east-west road needs to line up at Vaughn Road, where it currently intersects with Blackman Park, and if you can look at your screen. And so that's, that east-west road is going to provide a boundary for a, for most of the park elements, the park elements that I think a couple of the speakers mentioned, which were, you know, walking trails and open space and picnic pavilions, restroom facilities, those sorts of things. And so we don't want those types of elements to be on both sides of a public street, we think they need to be contained. And then it also needs, you know, a north-south street connecting back to Burntob somewhere, you know, in the vicinity of the property that North Boulevard Church of Christ purchased. And so that also provides a western boundary. And when you look at the size of that property, it turns out it's somewhere between about twenty-five and forty acres, depending on where that north-south road goes. And so the fifteen acres is a zoning boundary, it is not a park boundary. The park boundary will be developed based on the development plans. It'll be at least fifteen acres, the concepts that we have looked at, in this corner, look closer to twenty acres with some amenities out in the business park itself, including a mile and a half walking trail that'd be incorporated into the business park. And so I just want to provide that, that thought about the difference between the zoning of the park and what the park can actually be as far as size and space.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Huddleston. And I would just like to say, since I'm feeling guilty for throwing Walmart into my last comment, we have some really nice Walmart in town. The one on Memorial Boulevard is above and beyond, and so, no complaint there, and I apologize for that.
Can I ask Mr. Huddleston, any more questions?
Absolutely.
Mr. Huddleston?
I believe her name was Alice that first spoke. She said that people in the community wanted walking trails, pavilions, playgrounds, bathrooms. On this fifteen-acre, twenty-acre fort, whatever it ends up being, are those concepts all going to be aligned with that park space?
Yes, every concept we've looked at in the last few weeks discussing this internally with the Parks and Rec staff, that's what, that's what they've suggested and they've recommended. And to give you also a little bit of context, the Casey Trailhead, which is a very successful community park area, is on about seven acres. It has a pavilion, it has restroom facilities, it has a bark park, it has a playground, it has access to the Greenway Trail right there. And so we did that on seven and a half acres. Oakland's Park, which includes the walking trail and the picnic pavilion and the grounds in front of the mansion, I'm not including the mansion, that's privately held, and then, and not counting the wetlands area and the spring areas that we own, but just the park, the usable part of the park is about twenty acres. So that, you know, that gives you some context of the types of facilities that can be in there. The Oakland's Park doesn't include a playground, but it does include some of the other elements that were mentioned.
Thoughts, concerns, motions, anything like that?
If there's no more questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposition. All right. Thank you very much. We are moving on to item D. We have a zoning application for approximately fifty-two point nine acres located along Veterans Parkway, south of Burntob Road, west of Blackman Road, and north of Vaughn Road to be zoned GDO I. City Administration Department is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. This next, the public hearing is a companion to the previous item you just considered. It is for property located along Veterans Parkway, south of Burntob Road, north of Vaughn Road and I eight forty, and you can see it in the purple color on the map that's on the screen before you. This, when we brought this to you initially, we had you do two separate motions and set two separate public hearings, for one for the city-owned property, which you just discussed, and a second for these properties that are privately held and being included in this study by the city's volition. The study area does consist of these five properties, and you can see they're all different shapes and sizes. The properties are currently zoned CH, Commercial Highway District, and RS fifteen. One of the parcels is very difficult to see, but it's a sliver of the RS fifteen parcel. So if you're counting and you can't figure out how I've got five, if you look close at the map of the RS fifteen, you see a line that kind of runs to one side, and that's the fifth parcel that's about half an acre. So these properties, as I mentioned, are privately held, and were included at the city's request. Mr. Huddleston submitted an application on behalf of the Administration Department. Much of the information is the same for these properties as it is for the previous property. They are mostly surrounded with developed ex-urban and suburban land use residential lots. In the unincorporated area of Rutherford County, of course, the adjacent property is held by the city of Murfreesboro. I did want to mention that Shelton Square PUD is located just to the northeast, and then there is the Rock Quarry nearby. I did outline those right-of-away improvements that will correspond mostly with development of the properties, with the exception of the legalization of the ramps that T-Dot is already moving on. This zoning change request is to keep the base zone as is, so the property zoned CH will remain CH, the property zoned RS fifteen will remain RS fifteen. However, considering the investment the city anticipates being made on the city-owned property, the, we wanted you to consider annexing some of the very near adjacent properties to an overlay zone, to the Gateway Design Overlay District. I mentioned before that the city requested GDO III, which is the most restrictive zoning overlay we have in the city of Murfreesboro. GDO I is much more permissive than the GDO III. However, they both have similar review processes, so they, they come to you for review. One of the differences, of course, is that the uses are different as well. I think the City Administration Department has recognized that the Gateway Design Overlay District created over seventeen years ago, if you can imagine, has proven to be robust and vibrant economic base. It's created a strong sense of identity because it has an emphasis placed on high-quality design. It's significantly increased property values, and the GDO was able to create a Class A office space, which previously did not exist in the city of Murfreesboro. It's my guess that the City Administration Department is looking at those successes and hoping to replicate that success in other areas. With the city owning the largest parcel in this area, we can, as was discussed before, help with the future vision and land use of the area in a way that we can't if it weren't privately owned. We have somebody in our audience who's actually purchased city property in the GDO III, and I think it's one of the projects that everybody in Murfreesboro is proud I think it's one of the projects that everybody in Murfreesboro is proud of, and they love to go and play in the splash pad or eat nice steaks. And I think if he were asked to testify, but he's not going to be, he would talk about what a rigorous process it was to even be approved to buy the city property. We weren't looking for people who had money to purchase property, we were looking for people who could create jobs, who could create a sensitive place, unique developments, and something that would really give back to the city. And we still have properties the city own in the GDO III that we haven't sold yet, not because people don't ask us to sell it, but because if it's held by the city of Murfreesboro, we want more than just buildings. We want to see that they're giving back to the community, and job creation is one of those ways. And it's been a goal with the creation of the GDO to not only rely on our heavy industrial employment in Rutherford County, but to diversify so that we're not entirely dependent on one type of employment. So, white-collar jobs were one that we wanted to encourage whenever possible, and that's sort of the vision here. It's more likely that these parcels will not be a large office, but will be those commercial uses that would serve an office like that, although, as I mentioned, they're privately held. I did provide a list of the benefits of the gateway that was included in the zoning ordinance. The future land use map, there you go, shows the majority of these parcels are those that are located on the eastern side of Veterans Parkway to be business park, and the, the addition of this overlay does not affect the land use plan at all, and so, it's not in conflict. And then, that one parcel that's on the opposite side of Veterans Parkway is identified as suburban residential, which are those lots that are about 10,000, 12,000, or 15,000 square feet, and that, the base zoning is already commercial highway, so the base zoning already doesn't line up with that. But the addition of the Gateway Design Overlay District, which are being considered to add to these properties, is not inconsistent with the future land use map. It is the city administration's recommendation that the Planning Commission zone these 52.9 acres to GDO I. The GDO I overlay is consistent with the vision of commercial and hospitality uses on these properties. We would ask that you schedule, or that you conduct a public hearing and formulate a recommendation to City Council. And, Mr. Huddleston, were you going to provide? Okay. So, if you have any questions about this application, I'll be glad to answer them before your public hearing or even after.
I've got one. So, help me understand how the GDO I zoning applies to RS-15 or vice versa? I'm getting a little lost there.
Yeah. So, basically, there's not a lot that it restricts with RS-15, but are, so right now, that's a single-family home, and it would continue to be able to be a single-family home. The GDO is not going to make them come to Planning Commission for any kind of permit approvals. It's, it's for when a zoning change might happen, so if they wanted to redevelop it into something else, then that would kick in. But the way the zoning ordinance is written with RS-15, there are almost no restrictions in RS-15. It's wedged between a large commercial highway property, a commercial highway property, a signalized intersection, a road that's going to be redone to three lanes, a interstate, a major arterial Veterans Parkway, so I don't think the owners want, I don't, I don't know because I haven't talked to them, but I don't think they're necessarily wanting to change anything now, so it doesn't affect what they're doing now. If they wanted in the future to redevelop it, that's when some of those standards would kick in.
Okay.
We, in, in the, the actual GDO, the areas that are zoned RS-15 have just been placeholders, and that's what I think this, they think this will be right now, and I'm, I'm thinking the only property left that has RS-15 zoning on it is the Hale, H-A-L-E, property, and they absolutely will be coming in with a rezoning request, I think, when somebody wants to purchase the price for what they're wanting to sell it for. But all that property along Wilkins and Pike used to be RS-15, but it was just kind of a placeholder.
Okay.
If we rezoned the base zone, we, we might do something that means that the house isn't a use that's permitted. So, say we already, we wanted to rezone it CH, then a residential use isn't a use that's permitted by right, and so, if it were to be completely destroyed, they couldn't build it back. So, we wanted to leave the base zone in place, but as to not, I guess, put that on them.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Ms. Green before we open the public hearing? Okay.
Thank you.
If not, we will open the public hearing for this item and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. And again, if you come forward, please state your name and address. You have three minutes to make any and all comments, and please make your comments directly to the Planning Commission. Hello, Mr. Swanson?
Good evening.
Welcome.
Chairman Jones, Commission, staff. I own the property to the west of Veterans Parkway there, it is zoned commercial highway. I understand the reasoning for this, and I think that's amendable. I do feel that with the design guidelines, that we have plenty of restrictions in place. The cost of materials is, is out of sight now. I mean, eight months ago, four-inch PVC was a buck 37 a foot, now we're at 350 a foot. Conduits, the same way, wire has over-doubled. The more restrictions we put on me is, and I may have a different opinion because I'm a developer and a builder and a landlord, but all these, all these costs that continue to go up, and the more overlays or restrictions you put on me, just help me to incur additional cost, which puts me outside of the business model that has worked for, for decades. Excuse me, just a second. I didn't know, I don't know if you realize this, but to the west of the property that is shown here is commercial highway, I have another 87 and a half acres. That puts me at 99 acres at this interchange. I wanted to let you know that because at some point in time in the future, my intention would be obviously to bring it into the city or request annexation and zoning at that time. I would hope at that time, if this GDO does pass tonight, that you would consider not, when I ask to bring that piece in, overlay that with GDO. I would, I would not want that. I'm not asking for a commitment tonight, it's just that with the prices of everything and the design guidelines that we have in place, I'm, I'm just speaking my piece as a builder, developer, that there's lots of guidelines in place now. I would prefer, on at least my piece, that we don't put the GDO on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Anybody else like to speak?
Members of the Commission, my name again is John Harney. I've been asked by the owner of the 30 acres that is on the east side of Veterans Parkway that basically sits in between Veterans Parkway and the city park property has been rezoned. Dr. Anthony Togri owns that property. He asked me to come tonight and acknowledge that he is in agreement in allowing the GDO I overlay to be put on his property, and feels like that what the city is doing with the park is going to be a complement to his property and vice versa. And the GDO I, a lot of people may or may not know, basically is what's on the west side of 24, their medical center where it turns to Fortress Boulevard, that area that's been developed in there. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, Margaret Ann could say, but I think the GDO I is the zoning overlay that's around the Embassy Suites and what's happened there. But he wanted me to express that he was in agreement with having that overlay put on his property, and feels like it will all complement both properties in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harney. Who else would like to speak on this item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Ask for any other comments and questions from the Planning Commission?
I got a question.
Go ahead.
I think this is, I think I've heard all this right in a couple, in both of these last couple of things, but I do want to kind of make sure, the, the question about the RS-15 as it relates to GDO, is, is that owned by a church? That, that piece of property right there? The RS-15 right here?
I use the property assessor's data, which isn't always the most up-to-date, and according to the property assessor, it's owned by Richard L. and Carolyn Carter, C-A-R-D-E-R, and then Richard L. Carter, C-A-R-D-E-R.
All right. Never mind then.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm gonna comment, and then I'll make a motion. Mr. Swanson, I definitely understand what you're saying, and I'll take into account if I'm around by the time you're bringing your other one. No commitments, but I'll definitely take it into account. I just would say that to you. I will also say that this is absolutely, I mean, I, I remember sitting with Donald McDonald in my office two, three years ago before he was changing his, his stuff on his property, and I was going through all that stuff about, you know, I didn't want truck stops, and I didn't want junk yards, and all that kind of stuff, because I felt like this whole area out here could be kind of one of the coolest pieces of, coolest parts of Murfreesboro, because we got such a large area of blank slate, you know, blank canvas, whatever you want to look, however you want to say it. And this is absolutely going to be a gateway into our city. I mean, there's just no doubt about it that there's going to be so many people coming in here from the west, so there's some things I am willing to take a little bit of pain for and some things that I'm not in this role, but doing a gateway on this area right here to me would be really, really cool, really awesome. I will take it into account on your big piece of property, but on the small one, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the, the gateway overlay on these properties as, as submitted by staff.
We have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Next, we have staff reports and other business.
Not here.
None tonight?
Chair Jones?
Yes, sir.
Um, I, something hit me, and it was, it's frankly probably a little bit late here. There's still a few people out here that this might apply to, but it just hit me afterwards, frankly, and I'm sorry for that, but in, in, in that area out there, and, and really, I started thinking about it as I was talking, thinking about talking about with Mr. McDonald. I, I would like for us to consider, and this really, I don't think the Planning Commission necessarily needs to make any kind of recommendation on this, but maybe if Sean will sort of either say heck no or heck yes on this, ask staff to consider us placing some restrictions voluntarily on the uses within that commercial highway, on what we, on what we did on the park where we submitted, or where we changed its commercial highway. By the time it gets to council for us, we've, we've asked, I mean, we can't force, but we've asked other people in that area to do the same thing. I, I guess it didn't hit me because I knew that I wouldn't vote for it, and we have the approval, but it still probably makes sense that we would go ahead and voluntarily on the front end, remove some of those uses that we know we don't want to use, we know we don't want to sell the property for.
I agree.
I.e. truck stop and those, those types of things. I say we just take them out of the zoning on the front end by the time it comes to council. You go?
I'm good with it.
Does that make sense? I mean, you guys have any opposition to that from a standpoint?
Over and above what's already in the GDO III, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so like, you know, in the commercial highway, you got all those X's that it includes this, 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 you know, those hundred things or whatever. We have consistently, I believe I would say, asked for some of those most...
Egregious.
Yeah, kind of to be taken out in that particular area, and I would just ask that we kind of go through and maybe have staff make that list for us, and the council can then discuss it when it comes, comes before us in the next month or so. Is that good?
I'm good.
All right. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. LaLance. Any other comments and/or staff reports, any other business? And if not, we stand adjourned. Thank you.